We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. It's nice of you joining us tonight. As usual, we'll start with the prayer that Mike Barth is going to lead for us tonight, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call.
Power heads, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today and just give you thanks for this village and this community. We ask you to watch over our decision-making process through with this council and just make it better for the community overall and just guide us and direct us each and every day. We give you thanks and ask you to protect our police and fire and EMS and all those who serve our community in all capacities. We give you thanks for all that they do. Please watch this village, give you the thanks for all that you do for us and guide us each and every day. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
(laughing). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
Present.
Ridgeway. All right, you have the minutes from the March 18th meeting and you have the minutes for April 1st meeting. I would first of all entertain a motion to approve the March 18th minutes if there are no additions or corrections.
Make a motion to him. I second that.
Okay, we have Larry and Eric. Roll call, please. Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
And then you have the April 1st minutes in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections? I guess if there are none, I mean entertain a motion to approve them.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Roll call. Bassett?
I'm staying.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Staying.
Okay. Hmm, I see this is our guesses.
Still four to nothing, so.
So then we will go on to the bills. I think Cheryl reminded you in the packet to bring bills from the last meeting and this meeting. So are there any questions about any of the bills? We'll pass them all together.
I just had one quick one on the First Federal Credit Card for April 15th for Dunk Tank Rental. Is that part, was that part for the upcoming? Who do you guys rent that from? Do you know, well, fan?
It's at Edgerton.
Yeah. So it's probably your own place before we.
I just want to let you guys know in the future, the FFA over in Edgerton rents theirs for $75 for the day.
Maybe in cans, a whole area pig.
Yeah.
She got sponsorship money to.
Make a motion to pay the bill.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Staying.
Baker?
Yes.
Eric, would you like to come to the podium and address council?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Commander Eric Art of the American Legion Post here in Hicksville. I was asked to say a few words of what's been happening. With Holy Week being this week, this, yeah, my normal week, normal Thursday, third Thursday of every month, at 7:00 PM is when I have my meeting once a month. But with Holy Week, I pushed it back a week to April 25th at 7:00 PM. So all Legion members, I hope you get this message and show up. We'll be taking nominations for new officers at this time, planning for the Memorial Day Parade, and discussing our demolition of our property at 231 East High. It's the two buildings just to the north of our home building. We purchased that property back in December of 2017. As long as it was making Legion money, we continued to have it rented out. But the buildings are in such disrepair, we decided it was time to vacate the property. And we've got Buck Perry is going to down low the small building. He said to help cut costs, everything Legion members can go in and remove from the interior, he'll cut us a break on the price. And then we would like to talk to Defiance County Commissioners about getting a grant to help us take down the big house. We sent one girl to Girl State last year. Mrs. Betts, she really enjoyed it. We had one boy scheduled to go this year's Boy State, but he backed out. But we do have two girls. I just don't have their names with me at the present time. And we do have an alternate, so if one of them backs out, hopefully we can still send two girls to Girl State to help them learn about the way our government works, both state and federal, and hopefully some local, too. Our biggest struggle right now is membership, for Legion, Sons, and Auxiliary. We're down in membership in all of them, but from talking to other organizations, no one's joining anything right now. The Post 9/11 veterans, we have a few, but for some reason we just can't draw them in. And our next thing would be preparing for our 100th anniversary of, we've been celebrating the American Legion's 100th anniversary throughout the country, but in 2020 will be our home post 100th anniversary. So we'll have to start preparing for that. And other new items I would like to see, I'd like to bring Bingo back to our town to help raise money for our post. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Well, Eric, I would like to tell you thank you for the leadership that the American Legion takes in our local parades and events because it's nice to see you there. And I know that you're struggling for membership and hopefully everyone will give you the support that you need.
When I first took office as commander, we were somewhere around 115. But with all the ones passing and delinquent, we're down somewhere between 90 and 95. So Legions, and I signed new guys up, but they're just passing away faster than I can replace them.
Could you let everyone know how you become a member, maybe through the Auxiliary, the Sons and the Main?
For Sons and Auxiliary, if your parent or, yeah, father, mother, grandparents served and were discharged honorably, you can join the Sons or the Auxiliary that way. And then as far as Legion members, they voted at the last Legion Conference to petition Congress to vote that any person that served honorably and was discharged from December 7, 1941 to present, be allowed to join the American Legion. There'll be no more cutoff dates, you know, in between World War II, Korea, you know, the Cold War era, and then Vietnam. Those guys that served in there weren't allowed to join. Well, now they're hoping Congress will vote soon to open it up so anyone who served honorably will be able to join the Legion.
And the Sons, doesn't that also include siblings?
Of.
Of past member or a?
Correct.
Military?
Yeah.
So it's parents, grandparents, and siblings?
Correct.
Okay.
Just need a copy of what DD 214?
Yeah, yep. Just show proof of service and we can get you signed up.
Thank you for the update. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. We will go on. We have a notice of public hearing. The Hicksville Planning Commission will hold a public hearing for an application for a zoning change on Thursday, April 18th, starting at 6:00, in the office of the zoning inspector located at 108 Ragman Street. The application submitted by Melvin Bonträger is a request to rezone part of lots 82 and lot, part of lot 176 located on Oak Street between Railroad Street and Ogen Street. The lot is presently zoned as M2 heavy industrial. The request is to rezone to R4, single family, two-family, or multiple family. So that hearing again is Thursday, April 18th at 6 o'clock. Please come if you have an interest in that. Going on to boards and commissions. Do we have any boards and commissions here that have any reports to give? See any?
A small committee meeting here last week, but also when I did go to Defiance on April 4th for this Defiance County Active Transportation Plan under MAMI plan, they're trying to find some grants or some money to use for local communities, basically to connect different communities and/or parks for walkways, bicycle paths, and they're looking at seeing who is interested. They have had a lot of representation from the different communities within Defiance County. But it sounded like a neat program. We do utilize it in the park and/or if they ever come to a bigger fruition, maybe a bike way from here to Sherwood or Sherwood to Defiance and different things like that. I think some of the communities are starting to tie in some of their walkways and paths to different communities to expand, you know, walking and bicycling. So, and then did a planning meeting with the wastewater district. They had a planning meeting. They have to submit a report to EPA of their long-term control plan. They've been working on that the past couple of years, and it's kind of coming to fruition. Basically showing them how they're doing the recycling and/or landfill process for our county, for all four counties. So that's always been a formative meeting, but went to both of those here last week. So that was it for me.
Thank you for going to this for us. Sheila, how did the cleanup go at the cemetery this spring?
Great.
I didn't hear a single problem, anything, so I assumed it went well.
Mm-hmm.
Is it time, people allowed to put stuff back on now?
Yes, they are. They already have.
All right.
Everything's going good out there. We had a meeting last Friday. I was trying to think of when the next meeting is, but I can't remember. They're just going to put, get estimates for stone for a false setup. And that's about all we discussed. So, I mean, everything else is going good.
Great. Okay. So far. And any committee reports of council? Anybody having committee meetings to report on? Okay. So going on, we are at the Administrator's Report.
There might be some stuff later on, but I gave Cheryl a copy of what the OML posted as far as the estimated revenue for the next couple of years from the new gas tax, so you can get an idea what money we hopefully will be getting. Wanted to put a notice out, I guess, to the public or anybody that we could use one more freezer that runs. That'd be the ideal, a running freezer. Preferably an upright and preferably cheap. We've been just getting a lot of frozen from the food bank lately, and we've had to use Nelson the past three months. Get away from that. It's nice of him to let's us use his freezers, but if somebody knows, if somebody has a freezer they want to get rid of, I would take a look at it.
How big are you talking? Just a regular chest tight freezer?
I'd rather have an upright.
I go.
We've got two that are about, and I'm horrible with appliances. They're about the size of the door behind Ron. And then we've got side by side with a fridge, which we can fit a little bit in. But another one that size would really help.
No.
I think we got room to stick one, but let's see. Yeah, otherwise, I guess I'll just wait and see how the meeting goes. There might be more to discuss.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Kent regarding anything he's working on or what they're seeing around town?
I'd like to talk to you guys about setting up a meeting sometime, but over, cancel email that he sent.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, going on.
Sooner the better.
We'll go on to the Solicitors' Report here. And in Troy's absence, I will read the final reading of ordinance 2019-01, the third reading of ordinance prohibiting the establishment and operation of medical marijuana cultivators, processors, and retail dispensaries within the village limits.
I saw. Final. Second.
Roll call, please. Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
So the next one is Resolution 2019 for the first reading, 2019-04, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required. And it does not state it's an emergency, so.
Should be on the call three reading.
Okay. So there were a couple of things that I was going to have Troy to bring up tonight, but in his absence, his excused absence, we'll just discuss those later. So then we will go on to the Department have report. Please, Chief.
For the month of March, we had 353 calls for service. Out of that was 234 cases we worked on. In the last month, we have been extremely busy with some serious cases we've been investigating. You might see some maybe above-average expenses that normal for this time of the year, you know, what your costs, especially on gas. We've made several trips to and from Defiance for courts to have warrants signed. I made two trips to Toledo in one day last week on investigation, so we've had some expenses of obtaining, you had to pay, probably are going to receive some bills in obtaining on search warrants that we did for cell phones that we have to pay the cell phone companies to. Hopefully, the prosecutor's office, I've talked to him, I think he's willing to pay those costs, but it hasn't been, final decision hasn't been made yet. So other than that, that's all I've got to report for right now.
You're doing a fine job.
Thanks. So I'm telling you, I didn't expect this to be this busy. So I'm hoping this is just a fluke and it's all going to slow down so we don't, you know.
You had 354 calls in March. What's an average per month that you would have?
I think we've been averaging just about, actually, I think our caseload might be down from last month a little bit. I think it was a little higher. Basically, the calls for services, everything that we've done, it's a call for service. Out of those 353, we developed 234 cases where we've actually worked or we've had contact with people or we've investigated something. So, so a call for service could be like maybe an unlock of a vehicle, business check.
Cat in the furnace.
You know, something along that lines. But I think, I didn't look at the averages, but I think we're probably pretty close. This is what I think we've been running, so.
You've just had more major.
We just, yeah, the cases that we've had, they've been, yeah, major cases this last month.
Serious ones.
Yes. So.
And it's good you're taking them off the street.
Well, we're going to continue to do that, so like I said, they've experienced more than they've probably have in the last five, six years, you know, writing search warrants and things like that. They're learning a lot, you know? So it's things they've never done before, so.
So confident, having a young department like you have on their own is doing okay with.
Yes, they're doing fine. They're, you know, it's a process. They're getting there. Eventually, they're going to catch on to where, you know, they'll, should be able to fly right through it, you know, and not have the questions. But it's, it's a learning thing. I've been involved with them. They call me out quite a bit.
And I want to commend you for that. I know that whenever there's a call, day or night, I know from riding around, I can, you're there.
Mm-hmm. So they have to learn, I have to teach them. So they're doing a fine job. Doing a great job, so.
Great.
That's the nice thing about them being young. I don't have to break bad habits.
Thank you.
You're safe.
We will have the Fire Chief.
Got quite a shit going on right now. Run-wise, not, but that's good. Training-wise, we're doing pretty good. I have an applicant that I'd like approved for the Fire Department, John Elwood. Would like to come back to the Fire Department as firefighter, and he knows his primary responsibility is EMS, but we can use him on both sides. So I'd like recommendation from the mayor to put John Elwood back on fire.
I will recommend John Elwood for the Fire Department.
Is his training and everything up to snuff?
I don't have to train him or nothing.
I would get right behind the mayor on her recommendation and support John. I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
We have the firefighter one training class starting August 17th. We have two for sure and possibly four going to it. The reason it's possibly four, we usually like to keep them around about a year or so, make sure they're going to stick around before we send them to class. The last two that we put on, young people that are doing extremely well and well involved, they're at everything we have. Depending on whether it's grant money or not, we're going to send them as well, so hopefully it'll be four firefighter ones starting August. We finally, they've got all the bugs worked out and everything done on a first responder class. There will be one starting in June. They have a meeting in May. We have one, two, five firefighters interested in taking it. And I have two people from outside that I'll get a recommendation for. The cost of that class is $650 per person, so we have money in the budget to cover it. And hopefully with EMS grant, we'll be able to get that covered as well. We haven't got a final answer on the EMS grant yet. So I'd like a recommendation from the mayor for Aaron Pahomas and Daniel Pahomas, their husband and wife. They're both interested and starting out. Aaron has expressed interest in being an EMT as well, but we're talking with other departments. I'd like to start her out as first responder, make sure she gets stick around so we don't have a ton of money wrapped up. So I'd like recommendation from there for Aaron and Dan pending physical, drug screen, and background check.
I would recommend Aaron Pahomas and Daniel Pahomas for the first responders class pending good physical and drug screen.
Yeah, I'll back you up, Mayor.
I'm just wondering why these two are being so kind. Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Didn't they have to go with Troy yet on the contract for the Ohio First Responders for the grant and get going on that?
How many hours does it take for the first responders?
First responder class, it's only 51 hours.
Still a lot.
Yeah. But it's like 180 per.
Yeah. Good.
What training were you guys doing Saturday?
We had driver training Saturday.
I wonder if that's what it was.
Well, I saw them driving all over too. I'm thinking, what are the fire trucks driving all over the country for?
We take them out on a road test and we have parking lot that we do a lot of backing and maneuvering.
I knew there'd be a good reason.
Yep. We just wasn't out cruising around.
Get nice, buddy.
Yeah, could you see them out driving around, they're getting some wheel time. Eight hours of road driving is required, so just keep it on top of things.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're at the Park Board. Corey, are you here representing the Park Board tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to come up and give us a report, please?
Not really happy.
Okay, all right. Well, I would, I'd like to tell you publicly, thank you for the great time Saturday that was put on at the Easter egg hunt. I think that was well planned and organized, and it was enjoyed by a lot of people. I can see the parks gearing up with the baseball, kids filling up the diamonds.
See, they were putting the dugouts, they're pouring concrete today for the dugouts down there, too, for the boys, baseball.
Does anyone have?
Fighting going well for the day in the park?
I believe so, yes. We're still getting people that want to sign up.
They get their. While we're talking about.
That way the community can hear you, too.
Has anything been discussed on the, on the dollar amount that we had provided to Cheryl?
Um.
In the last meeting, we had talked about it, and not everybody was here to discuss it.
And I was absent at that meeting, so no one's discussed it with me.
I've not heard a dollar amount. Cheryl had numbers on what was given donation-wise.
Yeah, she's got numbers for what we need for money for upfront that we were going to ask.
How soon do you need the money?
Yesterday. Now, just, I would say probably by the first of June. Some of it is due at places like the rims and the nets and stuff down at the park. They're in pretty bad shape.
Do you know what the dollar amount was off the top of your head?
Well, if I could, now you did the cross on it.
Right.
Roundup.
I'm going to say right around $1,000 bucks. It might not be that high, but I wouldn't turn it down.
Right off the top of my head, I would think that would be doable. But the Finance Committee, can you guys, does that seem like the appropriate committee to discuss that with Cheryl?
Sure.
And then we can give them an answer as soon as possible.
Well, I was kind of hoping, and in regards to that, you know, that was, this is a project that was done pre-budget meeting, you know, was all after that fact. I personally would like to see giving them something to help with their cause. They're working extremely hard, getting all kinds of different activities going on. We still need money, like I said, to update some of the equipment down there and then, you know, pay for the porta-johns and stuff like that.
Those are, those are covered.
Oh, they are covered. Now, we got sponsor for that.
Do you want to do something, Mike? Or? Do you wanna do something like, or, I don't even know if we can, I'm sure we can.
I mean, I, they've been waiting.
Approve something, approve something now?
Yeah.
I think you need to ask Cheryl.
Well, approve that we can okay it without, without another council meeting, once Cheryl gives us the number. If Cheryl says, yeah, he, he wanted $986, give the three, give the three permission to say, yeah, go ahead, or you can wait for another council meeting.
If someone wants to make the motion to approve up to amount of Cheryl can find it in the budget, that kinda takes a lot of finance.
As long as Cheryl is approving it.
The finance committee, okay with that?
So exactly what your motion is for?
Sure.
I'll second that.
A thousand to the park board.
For the day in the park.
I do know that she has been taking quite a bit of donations and that type of money, and.
And I think those are spoken for already.
A lot of it is, yeah.
Motion to approve for Cheryl and the committee?
Just Cheryl.
To make that, or Cheryl to make that decision?
Is that how you want it?
How do you want this to actually?
The committee can make the decision.
All right.
Motion to approve $1,000?
The finance committee, who is?
For day in the park.
Sheila, Larry, Sheila, Larry, and myself?
Cheryl finalize. And who motion, who made the motion?
Mike.
And Mike seconded?
Whenever you're ready, then you can do real call.
Okay. Baker?
Sure.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Ridgway?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to the fiscal officers report. Were you gonna give that?
No. You have her, you have her fund status and you have the revolving loan report. If you have any questions, you can check with her.
Good answer.
I was just looking at the general fund status. That is going up, which is good.
Yes.
Is there a reason?
Well, property taxes came in March, and it was almost $200,000, I think she said.
That's good. I keep an eye on it, 'cause I know that was very critical, but it's.
I didn't mean to answer your question. No, we were talking about you.
I'm encouraged by that.
You're welcome. Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, thank you. Did you pay your personal thing, you guys?
Yes.
It was due today.
So, the list of current revolving loans, maybe this should go to the revolving loan committee first, I'm not sure, but, you know, Haynes Trucking has not fulfilled their agreement for the loan that we gave them, and he told me over a year ago that anytime we win our money, he'll give it back to us, 'cause he doesn't need it. He's not using it. But we're getting a higher interest rate than what we're getting in the bank, so I didn't really call, I wasn't interested in calling it in.
We even met about that once, didn't we?
Wasn't Troy contacting him one time, two times?
Yeah.
Yeah, that didn't happen, but, so anyway, I'm just telling you that I would like to see us. I mean, I would like to even get our land back. I, I don't, I don't know what's possible and what's not, but.
I haven't been out there. Is, is he even running any trucks anymore in this town? None?
I haven't seen any at all.
For a long time, there were only like two in town. I don't know if he's running any or not, but I thought maybe we better find out from Troy what our options are, how we can, like, if we have any option of getting our land back or anything like that, so.
Would Dennis know all that?
He might.
Take it back to revolving law?
I mean, depending on Troy's situation, I guess that's.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, if Dennis can give you some guidance.
True.
Well, we discussed that once before, and, but I think that was in the event of default, but we would have to compensate for improvements, and then, like, if he says, well, I put the underground electric in the stalls for trucks and everything, in the drop pads, so if he says, well, you know, I put $30,000 in that, then we would have to take $30,000 off of what he owes to be able to take the land back.
He received that for no cost, is that right, this land?
Free land.
Yeah, that'd be, might be tricky.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Our loan payments are all current.
Everything.
We have other stipulations for getting the free, free land. I mean, he had so many employees.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff he voided the contract.
Had so many employees, you had to build a building.
Yeah.
Yep.
There was quite a few, quite a few stipulations that never got fulfilled.
I spoke to Tim Becker at Five Acre Mill today, 'cause you know, we gave him a couple hundred thousand dollars a year ago for an expansion that hasn't happened, and he explained to me today, he's had a couple setbacks, but he couldn't really tell me when anything was gonna change.
I think that fire was really setting back.
It, it was a contract that he was trying to get, for one thing, that he was waiting to get, you know, to get.
I've seen a lot of expensive equipment sitting out in that parking lot being delivered, too.
So, that's kind of an update on the revolving loans. So, going on to the mayor's report, you know, we're gonna have the health fair at the community, well, the hospital's gonna have the health fair, April 29th to May 4th, and the village employees who have the insurance with the village can use the passport to pay for the cost of getting that lab work done, and if you do not have village insurance, the help, the village typically pays $15 toward the fee of your lab work, so that's gonna continue.
Do we need a motion?
I thought they did that. The village paid for everything, unless, unless the mayor wanted a PSA or PST or...
Um, I think, they have. Yeah, I think you're right.
I think the PSA is like 15.
We'll pay the fee unless you want some of the extras.
Yeah, need to vote on this?
You may, and you, it includes, I believe, the firemen and EMTs, all of our volunteers also, so you'll put that in the motion if you want.
I'll make that motion, what she just said.
Volunteers. You seconded?
Friends, neighbors.
Roll call, please. Ridgway?
Yeah.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker? Yes. Just trying to get myself organized here. I would like to thank Jesse. You, our chamber meeting last week was, lunch was at the pavilion, provided by the fire department auxiliary, and the meal was great, and Jesse was the program. The chamber walked over, chamber members walked over to the water treatment plant, and Jesse gave them a lot of interesting information about our water system, and I think there were some surprising facts there that people weren't aware of, and I think it was really enjoyed. Do you have any comments about that, Jesse?
Well, I always love taking groups through on the tours, and it's always nice, and it happened again with Rotary where people hang around afterwards and say, "I had no idea." So, it's just, it's a lot more than what most people realize. I enjoyed it, and we'll take more so big organizations through, so contact the mayor.
I wanna take him to the wastewater treatment plant next.
I'm gonna give him that tour, mayor.
And this is how it comes out the other end.
Yeah. And then, another thing that I have here, I guess I just, a couple things we could discuss. So, Susan Mack had this idea of making some improvements to the kitchen at the pavilion, because if any of you have been down there for a few years, the drawers and cupboards and everything's looking pretty flimsy.
I thought we did.
And loose, and.
We already did that.
You did what?
We already approved it. Let's let her finish. Plans have changed.
Well, why don't you say what you, what, what's changed?
You know more background than me. Well, the scope of.
How much do we charge to rent that?
$150, they get 40 back if, after the event, everything is clean.
24 hours?
Just 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, it's perk hours. It's not a 24 hour.
So what Susan's thinking is, boy, it would be nice to remove the fireplace and have an open access to the kitchen there, and Pogomire Design Group quoted $5,000 to do some engineering, some drawings or whatever, offer some suggestions or whatever for the project, of which I think Susan Mack is willing to ask Rotary to pay for, and at the same time, I think, you know, Ken's thinking that he can get some ideas on maybe how to take care of that leaking problem we have in wet walls in the restrooms and stuff at the same time, so that's Ken's area of expertise. I'll let him explain that better.
Well, I guess as far as, I'm gonna call it the Rotary, their idea was, yeah, to take out part of that chimney, take out that step, you know, that leads up, but to do that, it's gonna be pretty pricey, and they're not sure if we're gonna have to put a beam in, so that's why they need to do some studying on that end of it. And I guess, the first thing we need to figure out is, who's paying the 5,000, are we signing contract upfront, and Rotary reimbursing us, or are we paying that? That's one thing to discuss. While he was looking at the building, we were looking around at the bathrooms and some of the roof areas that I've been fighting for years with that rubber roof, and he goes, there'd be a way of solving that, too. The bathrooms need some sprucing up, and basically, he goes, you could take the back half of that building out from under that hill, which I don't know why they built it that way, you'd eliminate your leak problem forever and ever, but there again, you're talking some big bucks. So I guess, the first step is, what Rotary, I guess, was suggesting to do with the kitchen, do you wanna pursue that, or do you wanna do something different? And if we pursue that, part of this $5,000 we'd be paying them would also be to look at the rest of the building itself, what would be needed to solve some problems. So there again, I, I don't know how much money you wanna put in the pavilion, if.
Would you refresh my memory on what you guys decided to be for?
Well, we decided to, was it to allow Kent?
Kent.
The amount of money, just go ahead and take care of the kitchen like everybody wanted.
Change the faucet, the sink, the, any appliances.
Do what he needed done.
And that, is that what the money is in the budget for right now? You said there's money in the pavilion fund?
Five thousand or less.
3,500 or 5,000.
Well, but didn't this all come about because of concerns from people using the pavilion that it's not handy?
No, we never talked about.
I'm just saying this other.
The only thing we discussed was to read the kitchen.
Kitchen.
I'm just saying, this other west, I thought, didn't that originate with?
I think it was just that thought to be an improvement, if we did that, but I, I think we, you know, I guess that's.
I know the fireplace isn't used, but, but it, it still adds a bit of.
Character.
Yeah, it, otherwise, you'd be having a party in a pole barn with windows, you know?
The fireplace is closed. It.
Yeah, it's been sealed up.
It's sealed up with.
But I think that isn't wearing water.
But what do you do about the problem we have in the bathrooms? I mean, do you wanna, did you guys address those?
No.
But it, I don't, I didn't know about that.
Always been for years.
We make off that a year for rent, on average. What kind of income we got coming in on it?
It's less.
Compared to expenses, when you got your heat and everything else.
Down and down.
Usually, graduation time, Christmas time.
Usually, we had a profit on the pavilion, you know? We did come out ahead more than what we spent on it, every year. But if you say the rentals are down, I.
The rentals are down, yes.
Originally, there was no heat in the pavilion, it was just the fireplace, and that's the reason they put dirt over the restroom, so you didn't, wouldn't freeze. So that was the original, I remember when they built it. So now there is heat, permanent heat, so.
It would, it would not be that big a deal to expose those concrete walls. I mean, we could do that with your back on a couple dump trucks.
Well, you gotta, yeah, anyway, I don't care.
I could come work for you.
I just, I don't know, I guess with this pending contract, what you wanna do? If you're not interested in knock out walls and this and that for the kitchen, then.
If you're not interested in the contract.
You're gonna be giving Pogomire, and I don't know why we keep calling him Pogomire, but we're gonna be giving him as much money as it would take to do it.
That's who the Rotary has? No, I talked to the Art Tech Officer, he gave me some numbers. It doesn't come anywhere close, but no, Rotary, well, when I say Rotary, Susan asked me to contact Pogomire out of Bowling Green. So I, I don't.
If you wanna stick to the original plan with the kitchen.
I guess need to know what to do with this.
I mean, if Rotary's willing to pay for the upgrades, I mean, that's, that's one thing.
I don't think that's a upgrade.
I think Susan was interested in maybe paying for Pogomire's idea for the study, but she didn't not, she did not, you know, say there's any other money for making changes.
I'm good with fixing the.
Kitchen.
Fixing the kitchen, and, and me and Kent will expose the concrete if that's what Kent really wants.
I won't, I won't tell you what I really.
Okay, well, we're gonna stick with the original plan to repair the kitchen.
Well, if I can, mayor, I got Rotary tomorrow. I will check with, we have a foundation board, and then we have our Rotary club board, but I will ask them. I had not heard about it, besides what we talked about at council, so I'm not sure if it was, it was actually going to.
I don't think she has presented it to anyone yet.
Oh.
Two and a half weeks, you didn't know what I'm supposed to do.
Maybe I will talk to Susan tomorrow and see where she's kinda leading toward all this, and then who she was maybe talking to at Rotary prior to, so. But I'll follow, but like I said, I think.
Have we, as a council, officially agreed that we don't, if they wanna do something to it, if Rotary wants to do something to it, let Rotary do it, but we have washed our hands of everything except the kitchen. Do we want that a matter of record?
I'll wait and see what they wanna do.
Well, I mean, for when he comes back and goes, hey, they wanna do it all, and this is how much you're gonna pay.
Who actually owns the city?
The park.
The park's part of the park, so it'd be the city.
So would the money, 18 years to find out why I got stuck with it for each?
Would any monies come out of the park or the general fund?
That would be general fund. General fund capital projects. General fund capital projects. Land and building.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn then.
Well, I have another.
Oh, I know you're done, you're sitting here waiting.
Kent probably doesn't, you know, Kent found some structural problems with this building, and we need to talk about that.
That's why the committee.
Yeah, that's what I said I wanna meet.
Oh, that's what you're meeting about, okay?
Yep.
Okay, go for it.
We'll make motion to adjourn now.
Say it.
Roll call.
That's what.
All right. Ridgway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker? Yes.
What works for you guys?
Anytime.
Are we still gonna meet? Eric, can I talk to you as soon as the meeting's over?
That was me.
Can I have that piece of paper back, guy?
This one? Yeah, that's what I wanted to talk to him about when it comes up.
Yeah, but I would need.
Your reminder? Oh, sorry.
For my notes.
I'm sorry, was there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak that? Jesse, did you wanna say? Normally, I do, but.
The microphone, fish.
Yeah, you go up there. Too late. Oh, wait, really adjourned.
Done.